Good evening and welcome to Council Chambers. Tonight is a special town council meeting. It is Wednesday, July 26th at 7:00. And we are here for a public hearing and determination. Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco. Counselor Clemens.
Excused.
Counselor Clemens.
Present.
Counselor DePietro. Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Five present, two excused.
No?
No, there's seven of us.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Different meeting.
I haven't done this in a while. Seven present, two excused.
I want to recognize Anna, as she stepped in today last minute to do our minutes, so thank you very much. Okay, and at this point, we have agenda item number two, which is to open the public hearing according to the Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, to hear a dog complaint against Stephanie Rojas and to obtain an order with respect to the control or disposition of dogs found to be uncontrollable by their owner or keeper. And I'll turn this over to Evelyn Rivera, our hearing officer.
Before we start the hearing, I need to explain the rules of the hearing. All persons who wish to speak must sign in. All those wishing to speak must be sworn in by myself. Each party will have five minutes each to speak. Officer Shields and Officer Flynn will be speaking first. Secondary speakers will receive three minutes each. If a speaker feels they may need more time to speak, they may ask the council chairperson to grant that additional time. The council chair may grant or deny the request for additional time. The extra time will be granted in five or three-minute increments. During the testimony period, the council may ask questions at the end of each speaker's testimony. At no time during the hearing will outbursts or interruptions from the members of the audience be allowed. Those who will be speaking, who have signed my sheet, I would ask you to please stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. The town council will now hear the testimony. I will ask, I will call out each speaker by name. Please rise. State your name, and you can use the podium. My first speakers will be Kathy Shields and Kelly Flynn, animal control officers for both Southbridge and Oxford.
Good evening. I'm going to read from the report that you've all received. The Southbridge Animal Control Office has received numerous complaints about four Siberian Huskies owned by Ms. Stephanie Rojas, 24 Jerome Street, Southbridge. Four Siberian Huskies were currently licensed to Ms. Rojas. Froggy, a five-year-old red-and-white neutered male; Bunny, a five-year-old white-neutered male; Piggy, a black-and-white neutered male; and Skunky, a four-year-old gray-and-white neutered male. I have outlined the complaints below and have included written statements, veterinary records, citations, and quarantines. December 27, 2012, Kathy responded to a complaint of possible abuse of two dogs being left outside unattended 24 hours a day, seven days a week. She responded to find two husky-type dogs that appeared to be healthy. They were bright and alert. February 23, 2013, she responded to a complaint of three Huskies growling, I'm sorry, howling, and gave them a verbal warning. October 11, 2013, Mr. Adriel Figueroa reported that his two dogs ran off this morning and he was looking for them. Mr. Figueroa described the dogs as a red-and-white husky, which we've identified as Froggy, and a black-and-white husky, which is identified as Piggy. November 26, 2013, Ms. Michelle Mondor, 274 Charlton Street, Southbridge, reported that two Huskies were loose and attacked her miniature Pinscher Cujo. Ms. Mondor stated that this was the second time that the Huskies went after Cujo, but he was not injured the first time. Ms. Rojas's dogs were current on their rabies and were quarantined for 10 days. The dogs were described as a black-and-white husky, which is Piggy, and a red-and-white husky, Froggy. September 10, 2015, Kathy Shields received a bite report stating that Crystal Torres from 32 Canal Street in Southbridge was bitten on the arm by a husky owned by Ms. Rojas. Ms. Rojas, Ms. Torres stated that the dog clearly bit her by accident. Ms. Torres said that she reached toward the dog and startled it. She stated that her aunt owns the dog and that she and her daughter are there all of the time, and nothing else has ever happened since that date. The dog that bit Ms. Torres was described as black-and-white, which is Piggy. May 26, 2015, Ms. Hope Buchanan's two dogs got loose from her house at 51 Harrington Street, and she got into her car and went searching for them. She pulled onto Jerome Street and saw several Huskies attacking her dog Chloe, a white-and-black female Chihuahua mix. Her other dog Casey, a 14-year-old blonde Pomeranian mix, was laying on the edge of the lawn, not moving. Casey managed, oh, I'm sorry, I made a misprint there. Chloe managed to hide under a vehicle to get away from the attacking Huskies. With the help of some neighbors, Mr. Bruce Hines and Ms. Melania Diani, Ms. Buchanan picked up both dogs and brought them to Southbridge Veterinary Hospital. Chloe survived, but Casey had to be euthanized due to his severe injuries. Mr. Hines described the dogs as a black-and-white husky, which is Piggy, and an all-white husky, which we identify as Bunny. March 8, 2017, Mr. George Dow, 466 Worcester Street, Southbridge, called to report that two Huskies were at his house attempting to kill his chickens. His wife Marie was able to get leashes on them until the police arrived and brought the dogs home to 24 Jerome Street. Mr. Dow stated that this was the third time the two Huskies had attacked his chickens. The first time, the dogs killed nine chickens, and the second time, they killed 13 chickens. Mr. Dow stated that the first two times the dogs attacked his chickens, the owners came and retrieved the dogs and showed him where they lived across the river. A 21D citation, number 5137, was issued to Stephanie Rojas. Mr. Dow described the dogs as a rusty red-and-white husky, which we identify as Froggy, and a gray-and-white husky identified as Skunky. May 21, 2017, Ms. Rachel Wood reported that two Huskies went into her backyard and killed her seven-pound Yorkie Dolly. Ms. Wood, from 465 Charlton Street, Southbridge, described one husky as light-colored, which we identify as either Bunny or Skunky, and the other as rust-colored, which is identified as Froggy, and stated that both dogs, both of the dogs were biting Dolly. July 8, 2017, Mr. Figueroa called the police department to report that when he returned from work, his two Huskies were missing from his home. Mr. Figueroa described the dogs as gray-and-white, which we identify as Skunky, and black-and-white, which is identified as Piggy. Due to the frequency and severity of the incidents involving what appears to be all four of Stephanie Rojas's Huskies, it is our recommendation that the dogs be euthanized for the safety of the neighborhood. Please note that even after Ms. Rojas received a notice of dangerous dog hearing from the town of Southbridge, her dogs were loose yet again on July 8, 2017. This clearly shows an inability to contain the dogs, thus putting the neighborhood in jeopardy.
Do you have questions for the animal control officer? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, to the animal control officers. I'll relay a question that Counselor Carrasco had asked me to present, if that's acceptable. It's one that I had as well. There's quite a history, of course, and I'm wondering what has taken so long for this to come forward and result in a public hearing?
I would say part of the issue may be that there's four different dogs involved, and not all of them were involved with every single incident. And the dogs were quarantined. The Rojas's did pay vet bills for the animals that were injured. Other than the chickens, we don't, they were not reimbursed for the chickens, but the dogs were, all the vet bills were paid by the Rojas's.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Steves?
Yes, one thing I was curious is, so what other, could you tell us a little bit about what other efforts you have done or recommended to control these dogs in the past?
I do know that Kathy recommended that they not have four dogs and that they need to break up, when dogs get together, they act as a pack, and if one dog becomes aggressive, the other dogs tend to do the same thing. So the Rojas's are already in the process, from what I understand, have placed one dog and possibly a second one, I'm not sure about that yet. And I think they were hoping to keep two dogs, which might make things more manageable. But it also depends on what dogs, because some of them are clearly more aggressive than others.
So do you, do you have a feeling as far as like, which one would be the alpha?
Well, it seems as though the black-and-white and the red-and-white dogs were involved with more incidences than the other two. So the Piggy is the black-and-white one, and Froggy is the red-and-white one.
And which ones, you said that they've already placed one or two of them, which of the ones that have already been placed?
So Froggy has already left, I'm sorry. At this point, they still have Piggy and Bunny, and I believe they still have Skunky. I know they were trying to place that one, but I don't think they've placed it yet. So the only one I know that has left so far, according to the Rojas's, was Froggy. And right now, they currently have licensed, in the town, Bunny and Piggy.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. I'm curious as to why these dogs kept getting out.
Well, that is one of the big questions. They do have a fenced-in backyard.
That's going to be approached. Thank you.
Okay, so is Counsel Manna before Counsel O'Clair? I missed that, I'm not sure.
Please, one moment.
Okay, yeah, so then it was, okay, and then you. Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, to the dog officers. When a dog attacks other animals in such a way as described in your report, or humans, are they more apt to attack in the future?
Yes, they are. So far, these dogs have primarily attacked animals, but it's very common, if a small dog is getting attacked and people reach in to try to help that dog, that people get hurt, too.
Right, but I guess what I'm looking for is, if they attacked a dog last week, in two months, if they got loose again, are they more apt to go after another dog and continue that? Is it a continuation?
From what I've seen in my position as animal control, yes. Usually, once they really, especially small dogs, they look at them as prey, as opposed to another dog, and they will just continue to go right after them.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Clair?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So obviously, I think your recommendation, you just stated was to euthanize the remaining dogs. I'm wondering, obviously, if they're rehomed, they'd probably have to be completely separated, rehabilitated, retrained. Are there any other options that would get them immediately out of the neighborhood, but also not euthanize the dogs?
Sorry. I don't believe in like, passing the problem on to somebody else, because it concerns me that if they're doing this here, that they would probably do it somewhere else, too. Although, obviously, if somebody kept them contained properly, they wouldn't be able to reach these other animals to attack them. Sorry.
No, no.
Can you repeat your question?
No, absolutely. I was just, I was asking, like I said, they'd have to be separated, rehomed, rehabilitated, retrained. Is that a possibility to get them out of the neighborhood immediately without euthanizing them?
So the board here has guidelines that they have to go by. They're state laws that outline what orders can be given. So if you want to, I can read those right now. Or I can just hand them to you? I can just, I won't read the entire thing, I'll just read the ones, it's still kind of long, but you can order that the dog be humanely restrained. I'm not reading the entire thing, but I'm just reading the basics.
Yeah, absolutely.
That the dog be confined to the premise of the keeper, and then it really goes into detail about what confined means. When removed from the premise of the owner, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained by a certain kind of leash. That the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000. That the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime. So that can include videos, tattooing, microchips. That unless the owner or keeper provides evidence that a vet, well, they're already neutered anyway, you can order them to be altered. And lastly, that the dog be humanely euthanized. So years ago, people would order dogs removed from the town or city. That is against the law to do that. Now, you cannot order the dog out of the town or city.
Okay. And you can't order the dog to be put in some kind of, you know, like, a shelter, some kind of, you know, foster home or something of that nature?
You.
It didn't sound like it, from what you said.
Right, right. And I don't know of a foster home that would take most of these, of a legitimate rescue group or humane society that would take these dogs and place them somewhere.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McKenzie, then Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, to our dog specialists, I guess. If these dogs, all four of these dogs, you said one is gone and one is possibly on his way out. If these dogs were separated into four separate homes, would, do you think, and not near each other, maybe separate towns even, and they were restrained better, do you think that that is a possibility that would save from euthanizing these dogs?
I, like I said, definitely when dogs are together and one starts acting aggressively, it does trigger the other dogs to act aggressively, but I do, that they can do it by themselves, too. They don't need to have a whole pack with them. And they would, the key would be that they need to be properly restrained. If they weren't loose, they could have never done any of these things. So that's the key to everything.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
While you were talking about some of those things, a couple more questions came to mind, which is, first of all, have there any, have there been, was there any warning given to the other owners of the people to whom they've transferred the other dogs to?
I'm not sure that I heard you correctly. Are you asking if the dog that was transferred to the other, to the new owner?
Yeah, was there any warning given to the other owners of the other towns?
I do not know.
You can ask that when I testify.
Okay.
Okay, when you're up, I'll ask that question again.
Okay, okay. And are there any, have there been any attempts to train these dogs? I know, like, for example, you like to hear about dog whispers and stuff like that, about people who go train disorderly dogs. Has there been ever, ever an effort to do that, or is it an organized way we can get some sort of a trainer in there?
I mean, they could get a trainer. I don't know if they have done that yet or not. I will say that even if a dog is trained, you know, sits, stays, whatever, if they got loose again, that doesn't mean that they wouldn't go after another animal.
Right, right.
Does anyone have any further questions for Ms. Flynn? Okay, seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Police Chief Shane Woodson to the stand, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Thank you for having this public hearing tonight. Just as a chief, I wanted to be here, that I've kind of been in lockstep with this investigation as it's been going on for the last several months. You know, my job is to protect the people that live in this community, and several of them are here tonight to give testimony as to how they don't feel safe in their neighborhoods, which to me is unacceptable. So in front of you, you have an outline with the recommended strongest action, which would be euthanizing a dog or four dogs. And I would say that I agree with that recommendation by both animal control officers, but as a council, you do have a wide range of latitude as to what you choose to do. If you decide to order that Ms. Rojas has to put some kind of enclosure up within the guidelines of the MGL, Chapter 140, Section 157, you could do that, and, you know, I would be satisfied with that. The issue that I have is, it's been a continual problem from 2012 to today. It doesn't seem like it's getting any better. And my biggest concern as the public safety official in the community is, when's it going to be a kid? Some mother, mom, walking the child down the street in a stroller, and not to be dramatic, but, you know, who knows what happens? So I'm trying to prevent all that from happening and take the corrective course of action so it doesn't happen, so it doesn't ever happen. So that's all I have tonight.
Questions to the police chief, from Counsel, Counsel Steves?
One quick question. How often do you encounter circumstances that you consider to be as serious as this one, the dogs?
You know, not very often, Counsel Steves, and it's funny you should ask that, because I had to go to the town of Oxford and have their animal control officer, Ms. Flynn, who was kind enough to come here tonight and for the last couple of weeks and months, to help us with this investigation, because I'm not familiar. We've had one other instance, I think, since I've been an administrator with this department from 2009 to now. We've had one other, it was a pit bull, I believe, that we had to euthanize. So one in the last, you know, eight, nine, 10 years, that has gotten to this point, to where we had to bring in a so-called expert that's done several of these hearings in a neighboring community to kind of walk us through and give us the guidelines on what we can and can't do.
And the cases that didn't get to this point, what kinds of interventions did you find worked?
Well, initially, when people have issues where they can't control their dogs, they build better structures to contain them. We would see them where they would voluntarily put muzzles on these animals whenever they bring them out, whenever, and I have a dog, I'm a dog owner, I'm certainly not saying that this is an easy thing for me to get up here and say that I want to euthanize any animal. It's not my personality, it's not who I am. I'm not saying anything negative about the family that owns these dogs. I just think that it's, it appears to be beyond their scope of control now, these animals. Because what's concerning to me is even with everything that's going on, with the animals that have been killed, with the chickens that have been killed, with the person that was bit, although it may have been an accident, it was a family member, the dogs still got loose, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So at what point in time, usually when we want to modify someone's behavior, our animal control officer will say, hey, we've had some issues, here's a 21D citation, you're going to pay this fine, and that tends to correct the behavior.
Right.
Either they correct the behavior, or someone else that has a little bit more control and experience with these type of dogs, will take the animal in, and we never have any issues again. But this just seems to be an ongoing, you know, again, where it's not stopping, and I don't want it to get to the point where someone's actually killed.
Right.
A person, I should say, because animals have already been killed.
And from your experience with going to these scenes, first of all, have you actually responded to these scenes?
Have I, this particular scene, no, I have not.
No. Do you have, do we have any reports from the actual police officers on the scene? Actually, we do, okay. From your, from your experience as a police officer on such scenes, do you know of what the reactions that your officers have seen from the owners regarding concerns about restraining their dogs?
Well, most of them are very cooperative. You know, Ms. Rojas was, they had paid the vet bills, and they were very involved, and they were actively involved in the investigation, and they haven't really, unless ACO Flynn tells me something differently, I believe they've been fairly cooperative, whether that's correct. So, you know, it's not like it's where we're going down there and we're fighting with people constantly and, you know, butting heads. That's not the particular, that's not this case.
Okay, that's good.
It's been like that in other situations, but not in this particular one.
Good, good, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Stephanie Rojas to the stand.
Good evening. So basically, Froggy's not in the house anymore. He's no longer at home, he's living in Connecticut. And the people that we placed him with, they are aware of his history. I was completely honest about everything. I have their phone number, their address, and they say that Froggy has been doing completely great. He has not run away. He's the only dog in the house, they have no children, and he's been doing completely great. Skunky, I found him a home in New Hampshire. We are going to be dropping him off on Saturday, and they also are aware of his history. They've had Huskies in the past, they have no children, and they understand the responsibilities. And I also wanted to state that when Adriel Figueroa went to the police on, I don't remember, it was this month, July 8, that was, I believe it was July 8, that was a mistake, the dogs never ran away that day. He came home at 2:00 in the morning. My dad made a new fenced-in backyard to make it heavier, more structured, and he saw the dogs weren't in their black small crate, so he figured that they had run away, and since it was 2:00 in the morning, he didn't wake anybody up, and he went to the police department right away. But they had never ran away that night, they were in the enclosed, my dad made a new fence in the back, and they were in that small fenced area in the back. And since, since that time that they, Skunky and Froggy, got away, we've had no more accidents of them running away, because like I said, my father built in a new fenced-in yard, so they have no way of getting out from that. Before, we had electrical collars on them, and they would have to, there was a space in the area where they could go down the road. Now there's no, it's fenced in completely everywhere, there's nowhere they could go out to the road, and we've had no problems since my dad has put that new fence up. And I also wanted to state about the chickens, I had never known that they killed that many chickens. I spoke to the owner of the guy who had the chickens, he stated to me that they had not killed any chickens. I have taken complete and full responsibility of them with all the actions they've had. The recent dog that they attacked and killed, I gave her $2,000 in 24 hours, and I also gave her $70 for the cremation funds. So I have taken complete and full responsibility of everything that has happened to this point, and I was not aware that they killed any chickens. I talked to the owner directly, and I showed him where I live. I asked him if they killed any chickens, and he stated to me that they didn't kill any chickens, so I was not aware of that. And I also, Piggy did also go to training school in North Oxford. It was North Oxford, he did go to training obedience school for that. And also, the two dogs that attacked her dog, it was Skunky and Froggy, it was not Bunny. Skunky and Froggy.
Okay, Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Seems like we have a conflict in the report and to Ms. Rojas's statement in regards to July 8, the July 8 incident, because it states in here that the police department was called in regards to the dogs, Skunky and Piggy, being missing. So I'm not sure, I think I'd like to see the police report on that, because it's not in our packouts for July 8.
Yeah, like I said, my brother, he got from home at 2:00 in the morning, and usually they're on the porch in a small black crate, two of them sleep in the black crate, and then one always sleeps inside. So when he didn't see the two in the black crate, which always sleep there at night, he figured they had escaped from that, but they were all the way in the back in the new fenced-in area.
Right, but the police were called, and they went down? So there should be a police report?
They never came down to our house, so at 2:00 in the morning, they never came down to our house. So I believe there's a, I got fined for it, and I did write the letter, fighting the fine, $100, $50 fine, because they never ran away that day. And I did write the letter to the town hearing officer to fight that.
Do you want to?
Just want to respond to Counsel Manna. Ms. Rojas did come to my office on July 20, I believe that was Monday, and she did give me a letter stating that the dogs hadn't run away. But in the letter, she hasn't requested a hearing, and I just received the fine from Officer Shields this morning. So I've had no chance to do anything on this letter. That I know if I don't have one.
Chief, could you, is it okay with you if he speaks to that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct, there is, there's a log entry that was made. The gentleman came to our police department, said his dogs got loose, or he called us, or my mistake, he called the police department at night, said that his dogs had gotten loose, and he's out looking for them now, and if they come back, or if we get any calls, he asked us to call him. So, we never actually went to the scene to check and see if the dogs are gone, because the person was telling us they were gone. And he had said, if we find them, to please call him, and he said he'd be out looking for them.
Did he ever return a call stating that he found them?
No, no, there's no log of that happening.
There's no log of that happening. Okay, thank you.
Do you have more that you want to add?
I just wanted to say, I know that there's been numerous incidents, but I honestly don't think they should be euthanized. Like I said, Froggy has found a home, and he's the only dog, and he's been doing great, because it's easier to have control over one dog rather than four, he's the only dog. I have, I'm in contact with the owners almost daily, and he says, they say he's been doing great, no issues or anything like that. Huskies are known for being extremely primitive, I'm not making any excuses, but that's just part of the breed with any little animals, they're really close to wolves, so that's what they do. Our one dog Bunny, he was raised with a Chihuahua, so he's actually great with little dogs, and he's not your typical Siberian Husky, that's not good with little dogs.
Counselor Manor.
Thank you. I do have another question too, in regards to your statement, in regards to the chickens. In the reports that we have here, it states that chickens were killed, but you're telling me that chickens weren't killed?
No, I'm saying that I was not aware that the chickens were killed, I talked to the owner, and I gave him my phone number, the owner of the house that he had the chickens, he told me that no chickens were killed. Like I said, I've taken complete responsibility of everything that's happened and have paid for everything that's happened so far. So, I think that might have been a form of miscommunication, because if he had told me that that was what occurred, I would have paid him back or done what was necessary in order for him to be compensated for that happening. But like I said, I wasn't aware of that happening at all.
Well, it said it happened on two several, separate occasions in regards to chickens. So, I'm just curious that he never, you were never aware of this, but he's telling the animal officer this and the police department this?
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm saying it's confusing, because I drove to his house, I talked to him personally, I gave him my cellphone number, and I told him if there was any other issues, just to call me. Like I said, I think it was a form of miscommunication, maybe he had not checked when he talked with me. And then after me leaving, he checked, because he had never told me about the chickens, and like I said, I would have taken complete responsibility of that happening, but since I wasn't aware, I wasn't able to take responsibility, because I was never aware of that.
If I may ask the hearing officer, is Mr. Ayu, Dial, Dial, Dow, is he here tonight to testify?
He is not, but I did see his brother.
He's here.
Oh.
He is here. Okay, thank you.
Like I said, if I was aware of that, I would have taken responsibility, as I have with everything else that's happened.
Anybody else? Counselor Steves.
Yes, Ms. Rojas, what kind of, can you describe a little bit what kind of training you've had in terms of handling dogs?
So, I did go to North Oxford, like I said, we were taught how to, we were taught about the breed, we were taught that they're escape artists, that they will find basically any way to escape, that's part of their breed, huskies, they had electrical collars on, and even though getting zapped, they would still run away, that's just part of the breed, and I was also taught how to walk them on a leash without them pulling, so I was taught multiple things. When they have escaped, it was because there's a part of our house, when we opened the fence, where they had to go to the left, and instead, they would go down the road. And like I said, my dad has taken care of that, and there's no way they could go down that anymore, there's a more closed-in place, so now they only have a direct way into the door house, and since then, we haven't had any issues with them running away.
How long have you actually had huskies before this batch?
We've had a husky before this for, I believe we had her for seven years. I was really young, so I don't remember.
Were there any incidents? Was that here in Southbridge?
Yeah, it was here, I was really young, I was about six or seven, so I don't remember when we had that husky at that time.
Any other counselors?
Just my question, Ms. Rojas, it seems, what would make us be sure, for the protection of the rest of the community, that you can keep your dogs impounded in some way, that they wouldn't get out and then...
Yeah.
I mean, how can we be assured?
Yep, like I said...
These are reported incidences.
Yep.
Versus unreported.
Like I said, the house has been like re-modified, re-am, so to say, so if anybody could, they could go home to see that, there's literally almost no way to escape from the place that they're in. I guess that would be the most eye-opening way, I really don't know what other way to explain it, so you could visual see that there's no way for them to escape, and that the only way to go directly into the house is with fences all around, so they couldn't even jump over it, or go underneath, or anything like that.
And one other question. Do you understand the fear from your neighbors?
Yeah, I do.
Counselor Steves.
I actually have a question, I actually have a question, I think, I don't know if I should send this actually to the dog officers, or, because I was curious, based on what you just said, has anybody from the town actually taken a look at the property to determine how escape-proof the property is?
Someone already did come to the house, and they took pictures, and they looked a little bit, and they did see that it was fenced in, and yes, someone has.
Do you know who that was?
It was, I don't know her name, the animal control officer from Oxford, and also here from Southbridge.
So, Ms. Flynn?
Yep.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, through you. To Ms. Rojas, do you think that if you were to be allowed to keep two of these dogs that you now have in your possession, do you think that you'd be able to maintain them?
I personally do think so, like I said, we've had three, and after the incident of the Froggy and Skunky getting out and attacking the other dog, we re-amped the fences, we re-amped everything for them not to escape, and they have not escaped at all since that time, and we are going to be replacing Skunky, like, that's no question, he's already, I have the people's informations, we're fine, yep.
But what I'm wondering is, would you also be satisfied with keeping one pet?
Keeping one pet? Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I had one more question, actually kind of dovetails with, I was thinking the same thing too, that, so if you have only one of these huskies, have you had other dogs besides huskies?
No.
No.
But these two huskies, the two that are going to be staying home, which are Piggy and Bunny, which I don't know if they're going to be staying home or not, but those two are definitely easier to tame, and they're more obedient than the Froggy and Skunky. Froggy and Skunky were never obedient to begin with, they just tried running away. Bunny never runs away, we always, and we always have them on leashes too, we don't use the electrical collars anymore since we found that wasn't working, so now, if we ever take them outside, they're on leashes, and Piggy does also have a muzzle.
Counselor Manor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. To Ms. Rojas, I do apologize, because I'm kind of stuck on the chicken and issue, and it states in the police report that you were issued a 21D citation, that the dogs were returned to you, and I can't imagine the police officer is not telling you that the chickens were killed, and I just find it hard to believe that the owner of the chickens would, I'll talk, I'll ask them the questions, but I don't see why they would fabricate a story to the police officers, so I'm a little confused. You were issued the citation, and the dogs were returned to you.
Yep, I believe I was issued the citation of the $25, if I believe correct, of them being off-leash, and like I said, I wouldn't lie, I have no reason until I am being honest about everything else, and like I said, I've paid absolutely everything else, two grand in 24 hours is not easy to come up with, but I still came up with that. If I knew that the chickens were killed, I would have compensated, it might have been miscommunication, but like I said, I was not aware of that. And like I said, it might just have been a miscommunication, maybe one of the times it was me, and then another time, it was another person of my family member, but if I would have known that the chickens were killed, I would have been responsible and held accountable for that, and I was not.
When did you find out the chickens were killed?
I found out the chickens were killed when the two animal control officers came to my house, and you could ask them as well, I stated to them the same thing as well, that I was not aware that the chickens were killed, and that was news to me.
What date was that?
I'm not sure, they came to my house together, and they were, they were assessing everything, and that's when they told me about the chickens, but like I said, if I honestly knew about it, I would have taken full responsibility of it.
Did you try contacting the owner afterwards?
No, I did not.
And for compensation, no?
No, because I thought that that was just a miscommunication, because I didn't know, I didn't believe that that was true. That's why I didn't, I didn't believe it was true, because I had never been told anything otherwise, and they knew where I lived, so I figured if the chickens were killed, they had my phone number, and they knew where I lived, so I figured if that was the case, I would have been contacted about it, and so on and so on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Steves.
I'm just curious, so are you, are you aware of this letter that we have from Marie Dow? Have you seen it?
No.
Can we, can we share it with her? Would you, would you like to see it?
Ms. Dow is here, and he will testify.
Okay. What I was saying is, has she seen it, though?
The complaint letter?
Yeah, has she seen Marie Dow's complaint letter? This is the letter that we have that alleges that about a year and a half ago, two loose husky dogs showed up on my property and killed nine of my chickens, and then she goes on to explain more.
Yeah, like I said, I honestly didn't know about that, and all my other actions, I've, like I said, taken complete and full responsibility for everything else, so honestly, I really didn't know about this, because if I did, I would have taken responsibility, as all my other actions have shown.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to be calling different people who signed the sheet, and I understand that some of you might not want to speak, but if you don't, just let me, let me know on that, okay? Because I'm just going to be going down the list. Bruce Hines?
Hi.
No.
My dog, Dolly, was tied on a run in the backyard. We have, the back of my house is all tar, and I have a run from my house, my back door to the tree, and she has a nice long run, and she was tied on that. It was like first thing in the morning, I took her out of her crate, and I do that every morning, I put her out there so she can run back and forth, and, you know, because she likes to dig and play in the dirt. I no sooner tied her up, and I, this was, go through the basement, go up to my floor, and I was in my room, making my bed, and all of a sudden, I heard one little bark, and then a yelp. I looked out the door, and I saw two huskies chewing on her like she was a pork chop. And then, the dog didn't last at all. And then, when I saw this, I yelled to my son and my daughter-in-law, who was in the house, I said, somebody's attacking Dolly. I ran downstairs, and I went to the door, and I started clapping my hands and yelling, and it looked like, I didn't want to get too close, because it looked like the dogs were going to attack me, they were looking at me, and they were, you know, like coming towards me. But then my daughter-in-law came out with a big pillow, and she's waving in it, and they started to run up the driveway, and my son chased them up the driveway. And then somebody down the street, I guess, caught them until the policeman came. My dog didn't have a chance, and I'm really afraid, because I have little, I have little grandkids that play in that dirt back there, you know, and they're all, they're little, and they're crouched down like the dog, you know, what if they would have bit one of them? I'm really scared to let the kids go out there, and my backyard is isolated, it's just woods and then a river, there's nothing back there, that, you know, the dogs should never have gotten loose. And my dog was tied up and minding her own business, and she was only seven pounds, she was only a few months old. I just got her for my birthday in October. So, it was not, you know, not a good thing.
Any questions? Counselor Steves.
Yes, ma'am, sorry for that. Do you, have you had any previous experience and other circumstances where you had seen those dogs in the neighborhood?
I seen them loose running around, but they weren't in my yard.
Yeah.
Because there's, you know, there's like, where her house is, there's a bunch of woods, and there's the river back there.
Okay.
And I seen them come through there, but they never came into my yard.
Okay. But you've, but you've seen them on the street and elsewhere?
Yes.
Yes. Do you usually see the same two or three, or you see them all running together?
There was two.
Does he see two?
Yes, a light-colored one and a rusty-colored one.
Okay. Thanks.
Can you, you identify that you've seen them before, the frequency, or how many times?
No, it was like a couple of times.
Do you have any kind of idea? How long have you been?
I don't, I lived on Charlton Street for about 25 years, I don't spend my time in the window.
Right.
I'm in my house, I mind my own business, and I put my dog out, and I bring her back in, you know, what everybody else does is their own business, I don't bother, you know?
Just trying to get an idea of frequency.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you how many times.
Okay.
I know I've seen them a couple of times, but, but they stayed away, and I didn't, you know, I was okay with it, as long as they stood away. But this day, they weren't staying away, and they were looking at me like I was going to be the next meal, so I didn't want to go any closer.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you for testimony.
I'd like to call Jason Wood.
No.
I've known the dogs for about a year or so, and the two dogs, Froggy and Skunky, those two always were the ones to run away, they have the frequent records of those. Bunny and Piggy, they are more of the relaxed, they don't really run away, they always watch the other two run away, and they have a little niece or cousin of theirs, is, she's about, what, four years old, and she's normally at the house a lot with the dogs, and there's never been an incident of the dogs ever biting the girl or anything like that. I just think, you know, euthanizing all four of the dogs, when two of them didn't really do anything to hurt another dog, is a little too much. You know, I understand the other dogs, you know, they were told that they needed to find new homes, and they've been doing that, and understanding that, you know, if one dog or two stay at the house, and the way it is now, more fortified, and that would probably be a lot better.
Counselor Manor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, to Mr.?
Nieves.
Nieves. You said that Bunny doesn't attack, but in the report, it states here that she was one of the dogs that attacked, attacked, let's see, Mr. Bruce Hines and Ms. Melania Diani and Ms. Buchanan picked up both dogs and brought them to Southbridge Veterinary Hospital. Chloe survived, but Casey had to be euthanized due to severe injuries. Mr. Hines described the dogs as a black and white husky, Piggy, and an all-white husky, Bunny. So, Bunny was part of that attack on one of the dogs that had to be euthanized because of the attack.
Yes, I don't know, I've been there, I've only been...
I'm just saying that because you stated that Bunny was the more relaxed dog, and she doesn't go, or he, the dog doesn't get out and attack, so I just want you to know that it's in the report.
Yes, I understand that. As I've been there, present, in my knowledge and my recollection, I have not seen him physically run away, or heard of him run away, or anything, or attack any other animal at all.
And also, Bunny was one of the dogs that attacked Dolly.
Which?
Ms. Woods, who was just the previous speaker, Bunny attacked Dolly also.
No, it was Froggy and Skunky that attacked.
Okay, it states it in the, in the report, so...
He wasn't there for that, so he doesn't know about that. Bunny was around the dogs, they were all in a pack, they were around the dog when that attack happened. dogs. Um, they were all in a pack. They were around the dog when that attack happened, um, the four dogs she was talking about. But Bunny never bit the dog. Like I said, Bunny was raised with a Chihuahua, and he's great with little dogs. We've taken him camping. He's been on a leash. He gets along with other little dogs. And we actually have our upstairs tenant, she has a Chihuahua, and she's taken her Chihuahua. The animal control officer saw, there's a Chihuahua that lives upstairs, and we've never had any incidents with the Chihuahua upstairs. And they take their Chihuahua outside and such, and we've never had any incidents with her Chihuahua.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Nieves?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Hope Buchanan to the stage, or to the podium. Please, come to the podium.
My name's Bruce Hines. I live at 329 Charlton Street, and I'm neighbors with the Rojas's and Mr. Figueroa. Um, and, uh, just a quick thing. We're not here because we think you're bad people. We're here because there's a problem, that's all. Okay? Um, and I'm sorry that it's come to this, but again, it is what it is. Um, the incident that I was involved in, I was in my home. I heard my neighbor, Mel Diani, screaming, okay? And I wasn't quite sure what it was, but I went outside, and she was yelling. She was very frantic. She was yelling, "They've killed the dog, they've killed the dog." Um, I went out and went into the street, followed her down the street towards the Rojas's home, okay, at which time I saw two dogs attacking a smaller dog, and another dog over to the side on the lawn, um, laying, just laying there. It wasn't non, it was non-moving, okay? And there were several tufts of fur in the street. As I approached, I was yelling, "Out, out." And as I did, the dogs stopped. When I got closer, the black one bared his teeth and growled in a vicious way, at which time I backed away from him. The white one, at the same time, began to take the same stance. I walked to the right and went over to the house, and I believe it was Priscilla that was at home, who was Stephanie's sister, and I asked her to come out and contain the dogs, because they had attacked some dogs. At that time, Hope had come down the street in her van, and the dog that was on the side, um, she went out, and she picked that dog up and got in the van. The other dog had run underneath, and even though the dog had run underneath the van, the other two dogs were still attempting to, while Priscilla tried to get them back away, which she eventually did. And then at that point, I took Hope, the injured dog, and the other dog to the vet, okay, here over on, um, Central Street. That's basically what I know.
Questions, Mr. Hines?
On this side, questions for Mr. Hines?
Okay.
Counsel, Counsel McKenzie? No, no, go ahead, Counsel.
Through you. Um, my question actually is, the, you had said that the white dog was just standing around. Is that correct?
The white dog was standing, the other, the black dog was to my left. The white dog was to my right. The, the black dog made a move to me as I was yelling, because they were both standing there. The black dog bared his teeth, growled at me. The white dog then took a step forward, did the same thing. That's when I walked to the right, and I went to the house, and like I said, I believe it's Priscilla that was there at the time, who I asked to come out and to, to get her dogs in the house.
But was he, was the white dog actually biting the injured dog?
I didn't see any of the dogs biting any dogs. I saw them snipping at the dog and attempting to get the dog. And one would come from the front, the other one come from the side. So it was, it was an attack-like situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, I was also curious. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the last person.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little?
I'm sorry, I, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the last person. Have you seen other incidents with these dogs in your neighborhood?
Um, I just recently moved to the neighborhood four years ago, okay? Um, like I said, since I've known the Rojas's, they've been very nice, very kind to me.
Okay.
But I've known of two incidents, I think, and that's it. Um, I've been made aware of others, since, I only know about two incidents.
But you, so you've seen two yourself?
No, no, I know about. I've seen one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Counsel Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Um, I know that you and I have, I believe you and I have spoken on the phone a couple of times about this. Um, and I, you know, obviously apologize for what's happened. Um, the white dog, this is, that we're talking about, that was, you know, going from one side of, underneath the van, that the dog was hiding under, am I getting the?
Well, there were two situations. One, when I first approached the situation, the dog was in the middle of the street. One dog was in, to the front and right, and the other dog was to the front and left, okay? So you had the two dogs in two different positions. This dog was snipping at this end. The dog would then turn to protect herself this way, and then this one would snip, okay? So it was a, it was a thing where she was trying to just save herself, okay? But then when Hope came, she had a van, her dog immediately ran under the van, um, and they still attempted to try to get to the dogs, and that's when I was asking Priscilla to take the dogs in the house.
And this is, the white dog that you're talking about, is the bunny that's still in the home?
I don't know their names.
Okay, so it was?
I, I just know that.
The all-white husky?
The all-white husky, and the black and white husky, yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's all you have.
Okay.
Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Um, thank you, Mr. Hines.
I'm sorry, could you speak up, please?
I said, "Thank you, Mr. Hines." Um, I'm reading your statement, and it says that, um, you look down Jerome Street in the direction that she, I think it's Mal, was walking to see two huskies, one black and one white, and one all-white attacking a small beagle-sized dog on the left side of the street, and a small fluffy dog not moving on the edge of the lawn. Was that, that was you? Your name's Bruce Hines?
I'm sorry?
Your name is Bruce Hines?
My name is Bruce Hines, yeah.
Okay, so I was just reading that. So you saw, you actually saw the dogs attacking the, the smaller?
Attempting to, right, the, the one to the left, okay? The other dog was not moving, and it was not involved in anything.
That was the one on the edge of the lawn?
Right, that was the Pomeranian, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Hines.
I'd like to call Atriel Figueroa? And your name is, sir?
I live in 24 General Street. I'm the owner of the house. I know that there is a concern on the dogs. We have been taking measures on the two dogs, that we seem to have the problem of initiation, the escape, and that's, um, Froggy and Skunky. Uh, Froggy already have been adopted, and the other one is going, going to be adopted on Saturday. We have been following her direction. When we had the first incident, that the dog came into our lawn, I wasn't there, that's what I heard. And then we have the dog with the electrical collar, and because they saw the dog, they jumped after the dog to kill him. Um, the animal control lady, when she came to approach about the situation, she told us, that's what usually dogs do. They attack others. And because, uh, they were excited to see the other dog, the electrical collar didn't work, and that's why they went out. Because the, the dog approached to our house, and that's their territory, and that incident happened. The second incident, I know it was our fault, the dogs escaped, and they went into the house, and they attacked the other dog. But in any circumstance, they have been attacking any other human being. In my house, there is a lot of kids that come and go. There is a lot of friends of my son, that is 14, that comes and goes in the house. The ha, the dogs, most of the time, like 80% of the time, they are inside of the house. The problem that we have been having sometimes, escaping, is when we take them outside to go to do their business, when they decide to escape. Um, but like I said, they never have been attacking any other person. Uh, we, we didn't have any incident at the house when somebody comes, uh, and they are, they're with people, they're playful. With other animals, we know the situation. Um, but I don't think, like, like I said, we have been following her direction. Um, she gave off the information about the husky, uh, rescue, uh, people, and that's the one that we called, and that's why one of the dogs have been rescued, have been adopted, and the other one is in the process, uh, of being adopted. The other one, the white one, uh, never had a problem. I open the door, he won't even go outside. He will stay inside. Sometimes I have to push him so he can go outside to do his business, because he doesn't want to go outside. And the pig, the other dog, Piggy, because we only have two, we don't have four, we are going to be able to contain more, because we don't have to deal with the four dogs. So we only have two dogs, and technically, one that we have to work with, because the white one is, like I said, we open the door, and he doesn't want to go outside. We put another fence. We are not using the electrical collar no more, because they don't work. Um, I put another fence in the house. They, when they saw my house, it's all fences for the dog, and I put another fence for the other two dogs, so that way they will go outside, uh, through the back of the house, so they don't have to go in any way in the front of the house. And then, like my daughter said, the other incident about the chicken, we knew nothing about it. We know about all the time that they have been escaping. We know the two incident about the dogs. Nobody told us about the chicken. That was like, when that happened, the, the second incident about the dog happened, that when they came to my house to take pictures of the house, and the kennel, and all the fence, that they told us about the chicken. But in any way, we didn't know, nothing, any other incident, that those two incidents that happened with those two dogs.
Any questions for us? Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in regards to the dogs not going outside, there is a complaint from February 2013, and I don't know if, um, the white dog, who's known as Bunny, I think that's who you were referring to, um, is part of the three huskies howling outside. Um, so if they're howling outside, and I thought I read somewhere in here, and I have to reread my things, um, in regards to the dogs being left outside for 24 hours.
No, that, that's a lie. It's like I told, I, we received a fine, that the dogs were howling from 7:00 o'clock in the morning to 7:45 in the morning, and that's a lie. They never howl for that long. They only howl if they are outside in the kennel for like five minutes or three minutes. When I go into my house, because they recognize the car, when I advise and I park, they start howling, because I, they know that I will let them inside the house. Once I talk, talk to them, scream to them, they will stop howling. I think that the longest time that they have been howling, like three, four minutes, when they are outside in the kennel, of course, when they hear a siren, uh, the fire department, they will start howling. Uh, but the only thing is, like I told the ladies, like, next time, if I receive a fine, I will talk to my neighbors. I have a tenant upstairs, that she pay me rent. I don't think that she was going to be staying in an apartment, that they, I have dogs howling for like an hour, that early in the morning. So they howl, yes, but they only do it for like a couple of minutes, and that's about it. And like I said, most of the time, it's like, they will sing outside, but most of the time, they're inside of my house.
Okay. But the report states that, um, after the verbal warning, the owner stated that they, they will be moving back into the house no later than two weeks. So.
Well, we have been.
Were they outside, or were they inside?
No, they, they are inside. Like I said, most of the time, and like 80% of the time, 90% of the time, they are inside the house. They go outside. I have a kennel prepared for them. They go outside to do their business, and then they will come inside the house.
Okay, well.
They, they will be in the kennel, they will be in the kennel, maybe for, like during the day, maybe an hour, or maybe less. But like I said, most of the time, they are inside of the house.
Well, the report, it just appears, it shows that they were outside more so than inside by the owner verbally stating that she would have the dogs, or they would have the dogs, whomever it was, um, move back into the house within two weeks.
Yeah, no, they, they are most of the time inside of the house. I know that, because that's a fight that I have with my daughter, because they shed so much hair, they have a lot of hair inside the house. So they spend most of the time inside the house.
Thank you.
Counselors? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Judge George Dow. I believe he's out in the hallway. Mr. Dow? No, that's, he's my last one.
Is there anyone else who wants to be heard today? Is there anyone else here who would like to be heard today? Is there anyone else who would like to be heard today? Mr. Dow, I know, that's, this is his opportunity, or we're going to move on.
Good evening. Um, my name is George Dow. Uh, I live on 466 Worcester Street, which is across the river from Charlton Street. Um, I had three incidents with the, with the huskies. Uh, two of them, they were able to get to my chicken coop and kill, uh, several of my chickens. And, uh, the last time, they weren't able to get to my chicken coop. I fortified it, and, but, but my wife and kid were out there. But they never hurt my wife, but we were able to grab them. They, they, they were at our property. Uh, we, we were able to grab them and, and, uh, give them back to the, to the police officer that showed up to the property. Uh, this is my experience. I don't know if you guys have any questions.
Counsel Manna?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Dow. Um, I, I read your report, and I read the police report in regards to the chickens, and I asked Ms. Rojas. Well, she stated that she was, wasn't aware that the chickens were killed. Did you make her aware, or do you know if she was aware that your chickens were killed on two separate occasions?
There was no direct communication with, uh, the dog's owner. It was always through the animal control or the police station. So there was no direct contact, except the last time, I think, no, the, even the last time, uh, the officer showed up and grabbed the dogs, not, not her.
So you didn't have any direct contact with Ms. Rojas, communication over the phone, or?
I think, I think, at one time, she showed up looking for them, but they weren't at my property. They were somewhere else.
Thank you.
Counsel McKenzie?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, uh, Mr. Dow. Uh, at any time, when the, when you saw these dogs, you, I think you said at one time that your wife and your child was in the yard as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, did the dogs pose any kind of a threat to either your wife or your child?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Dow, if you could wait one more moment. Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Um, so with the dogs that you observed, um, either the times that the chickens were killed, or the time that they were just in the property, and you were able to leash them, um, which, do you know, which dogs were they?
Uh, I think it's a, it's a rusty, a rusty red and, and white, and a gray and wa, and white.
Okay, so the, um, those two dogs on all three occasions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Any one? Okay, hang on. Mr. Dow, I guess you can, you might want to wait a second.
All right, it's okay.
Counsel Steves?
Um, yeah, I was curious, first of all, um, you mentioned, your, uh, your, Marie's letter here mentions that killed nine, that they killed nine of the chickens from the coop. Can you describe a little bit of how, um, how your chickens are, are contained? And how the dogs got there?
I, I do have fencing, but the first couple of times, it was a flinty, uh, flinty fence.
Okay.
Uh, they were able to, to, to knock it and, and get in.
Okay.
But now I fortified it, and nothing can get in now. But, but they, and, and I think one time, they dug, they dug under the fence.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I know chickens can also escape. I've got them, so.
Yes.
Somebody else? Is there another question?
Okay, thank you.
I just, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be perfectly clear, because Ms. Rojas stated that she did speak directly to you, and you told her there were no chickens killed. So, and then that she thought maybe it was just a miscommunication between you two. So I'm confused. The, the stories are conflicting.
The only time I spoke to Mrs. Rojas is when she came to our property looking for her dogs, but they weren't there.
Okay, only time you spoke to her was looking for, okay.
Every other time, it would have, it was through the animal control or the police station.
Okay.
So there was no direct contact.
Thank you very much.
Was that after, when you spoke with her, was that after the chicken attacks, or at a different time?
Uh, spoke to.
Yeah, when you said she came looking for her dogs.
That's, yeah, that's, that's the fourth time would have been, but they weren't at the property.
So is that?
That's after, the two times they got, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, so in between and then the last, okay.
Yes.
Counselor Mano?
You have a total of 22 chickens killed, because the report states one was nineteen, I mean nine, and then the other time was 13 chickens. So total of 22 chickens were killed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I don't know that this is actually a question for Mr. Dow, but in reviewing the reports and the statements, I recognize that the statements that were made and what you've presented here today, the claim is that chickens were killed. But I'm wondering if the police department could verify that, because their report does not actually indicate anyone looked at chickens or saw any chickens.
So we can ask that?
Could we ask that of the police chief? Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Would you like to ask the question?
I would like, yes, please.
So if we could have someone answer that?
Good evening again.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat that question, Chief?
No, all set, counsel, I believe. Our animal control officer, Ms. Shields, had gone to the property and actually counted the chickens that were killed. So a police officer was not there, I don't believe. But our animal control officer was there and verified that they were killed, yes.
Okay, Mike, thank you, if I may. I just wanted to make note that the police report itself from March 8, 2017, makes no mention of anyone witnessing the chickens, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So thank you, I appreciate that.
They were confirmed as being killed, yes.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else with any other questions? Are there, is there any other testimony? We'll ask once again, is anybody else would like to speak this evening?
Okay. Okay, seeing no other, there are no other speakers today. I'd like to thank you for coming and participating in this hearing. The town council will make their ruling, and a written copy of this ruling will be forwarded to all the parties involved within five days. Copies of the final determination will be on file in the town clerk's office. The hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
Evelyn, Evelyn, may I ask a quick question? May I just clarify, so do we have five days to make the ruling? Or do we have five days for them to get the copies of the ruling?
You have five days to make the ruling.
Because those two, because you just said that there's five days, that they'll get copies of those?
Five days to make the ruling, and then after the five days, Ms. Rojas and the other parties involved will be notified.
So, I would clarify too, if you're reading the MGL, we have up to five. We can make it at any time therein, whether it's this evening, or we'd have to do another meeting.
And here, do we need a special meeting to make the ruling, because we can't collaborate?
That's true.
What's for the open meeting law?
I think currently, the next agenda item is to discuss the credible evidence and testimony presented.
Oh, okay.
That's why we're here.
Oh.
It's just an issue of whether or not we decide...
So we'll just let the, those who are choosing to leave before we'll continue. Counselor McKenzie?
Madam Chair, would we do this in the executive room?
No.
This is a public...
We can't.
Okay. No, just asking, that's fine.
Yeah, no, it's a public matter, I'm sorry. Don't make the rules.
No, I like transparency too.
Okay, great, so we're good then, everyone's left, but Nathan wants to leave. So now we're gonna continue with our meeting, which is what we are here, the special town council meeting. Agenda item number four is to discuss credible evidence and testimony presented at the public hearing and entertain a motion to deem whether said dogs are a nuisance or danger to the community. I just wanna point out, that is the determination we, according to the packets that we were given, with the information A through C, we have choices of deeming the dogs as just a nuisance or as a danger. And then, once you have decided on whether they're, which they are, then we take action as to what we want to do about that. So, we can discuss it, we would be looking for a motion so that we could at least come up with a, the context of what they are to being deemed. So if that, is that clear, we're good? The police chief is still here to answer questions in our discussion as we have the opportunity to hear people during any of our meetings, at any of our meetings. So, we don't need you yet, but just in case.
Well, how would that not constitute testimony?
Just if we have questions, and we're discussing what we wanna do.
In terms of what the law actually says.
Right, we're now, we're in a meeting to decide what to do. So if somebody wants, if we have a question in regard to anything that we've heard tonight on that respect, people could have stayed after the hearing, it's a meeting.
Right, right.
Okay, okay, so Counselor McKenzie, then Counselor Nash.
Madam Chair. See, listening to the testimonies and reading the information, the attacks were primarily against animals, except I think in one case, there was an accidental biting, or it was proposed that it was an accidental biting because someone reached in. I guess my only question, well, I have two questions. Number one is, the dog that did the accidental biting, is that one of the two dogs that has gone? And the other question is, it appears to me that four dogs is way too much for that young lady to be able to physically handle.
That's true.
And I think that, I think she did the right, I think she tried to do the right thing in many areas, by compensating, by trying to be available to help and everything else. But I think that she's overwhelmed with these four dogs. I think that possibly even two dogs could be very difficult for her. My, I hate to see dogs euthanized, but we also have to be concerned about the neighborhood and children in the neighborhood. It doesn't appear that the dogs would attack a child or an adult, but that's not yet. That hasn't happened yet. But I don't know if we really wanna wait to see if that's gonna happen. My recommendation would be to suggest she get rid of three dogs. And if she wants to keep one dog, probably the mildest dog of the three, of the four dogs, would be, that would be my recommendation. And that she should get rid of, not euthanize, but try to send it to rescue and send it out of state.
You can't.
Can't do that.
It's illegal.
All right, how about out of town?
Cannot be removed from the town that is residing in.
Article number seven, just to be clear, no order shall be issued directing that a dog deemed dangerous shall be removed from the town or city in which the owner or the dog resides. So currently, we're on the deeming the dog dangerous.
Hmm.
I think that we need to do, we need to make a determination on dangerous or just nuisance. And that's by virtue of us up here.
I think that the first thing that, I think that the first thing that we need to decide is, first of all, I think we need to put down the four dogs' names, and then decide which dog has done which deed. And therefore, then decide if that dog is a nuisance or danger. And then after you've made that determination, then I think you can make a decision.
Sounds good to me. If I may ask for clarification, do we have any, does our decision have any control over the dogs that are no longer in Southbridge?
No.
It does not?
Does not.
Are you sure?
I'm sure. Because we don't have any, if they're not in our possession, if they're not in our town, we have no jurisdiction. I've got, I got testimony from the other towns when I was doing my research.
Okay.
And in one of the hearings, the dog had been removed before the final determination was done, and therefore, nothing was able to be done with that dog.
Okay.
That dog, wasn't that dog supposed to remain in Southbridge?
But my understanding is that that one dog that she, that Ms. Rojas says went to Connecticut, was removed before this ever came to my desk.
Yeah, and the other dog...
Now, the other dog in that one is...
Supposed to go Saturday.
It's supposed to go on Saturday, so you need to make it to Saturday. Right.
So that's skunky, it's supposed to go on Saturday to the man's chair, so, but we're under the process. All right, so Counselor Mano, and then...
I think Counselor Nash was before me.
Oh, sorry.
I was after Counselor Nash.
Okay, keep me straight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I don't speak for everybody up here, but I think I do, in that we definitely take this extremely seriously. We don't take it lightly. We did hear some very interesting testimony that substantiates much of what was within our packets. I would have one or two quick things to point out, and perhaps that is, maybe we should go through very clearly right now and remind all counselors what steps we are allowed to take as prescribed by Mass General laws, which were in our packet. I don't think everybody had that, or I don't think everybody reviewed it. There were some very clear steps that are prescribed for us. That isn't evident to me that we're all on the same page. Second thing is, while I understand that it would be a very hard thing for an owner to accept, I'll step back over to the statement that both the police chief made and animal control officer. And I'll read from the animal control officer's statement, and that is, "Due to the frequency and severity of the incidents involving all four huskies, it is my recommendation that the dogs be euthanized for the safety of the neighborhood." Beyond that, one statement that kind of troubles me is the last statement, and that is, "This clearly shows an inability to contain the dogs. So thus, we have the frequency and severity of the attacks, and yet, we also have, in my interpretation, the owner's inability to contain." That is something that weighs heavily on my mind, and it has, since I read this packet, I think on Thursday, Friday, and a few times over the weekend. I know that we need to make a determination, this weighs quite heavily. But I would please, at this stage, request, let's go through the steps that are available to us for any recommendation or decision that we need to give, please, thank you.
So, shall we go through the steps, or would you like to, oh, Counselor Mano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Throughout the hearing, and listening to the testimony and the questions that were asked, not only by myself, but by others, I found some inconsistencies. It troubles me, it troubles me to, the chickens, that's a sticking point for me. Twenty-two chickens got killed, and she's, the owner of the animals, the dogs, was up there stating that she didn't know, and she talked directly. Mr. Dow said he only spoke directly to her once, and that's when she came looking for her dogs, the fourth time on his property. So I'm assuming the dogs may, she might have thought the dogs went over there, I don't know, the dogs go over there for the chickens. But ACO Shields let her know, because it stated, I believe it stated somewhere, that she did, she was, she was known about it, and there was a police report. And, and then the howling, being left outside, when I read the report, that they're gonna be moved in, back into the house within two weeks. And then testimony stating that the dogs were never outside, we even had to push one dog to go outside. And then asking the question, you know, if the dogs are attacking animals, you know, is it gonna happen more frequently? And yes, we were told that, yes, that tends to happen. I don't, the dogs that were separated seem to be the troublemakers. I'm not saying that the other dog isn't a troublemaker, or looking for trouble, or attacking. But who's to say that they're not gonna do this on their own, or find another dog in the neighborhood, or get loose, or... My concern is the safety. They didn't attack humans, except for that one who said it was an accident. But you know what? Ms. Wood, who's up here, her dog, Dolly, that was, that was her pet. And that was, like, they're like family, pets are like family to some people. So just to disregard, they didn't attack humans, they, it was only, that's, you can't do that, because to some people, the dogs are part of their family no matter what. And it is, it's very disheartening to, to read the reports, listen to some of the testimony, and to know that this has been an ongoing issue for five years, too. So, I don't, I, I'm leaning towards taking the recommendation of ACO Shields, thank you.
Very good, thank you. So remember, the first thing we will do, we would end up having to determine nuisance or danger, and then work on the recommendation of what to do about that. Counselor Claire?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So, I've been mulling this over since, actually for a couple of months now. Bruce Heinze had reached out to me, and so I was kind of aware of what was going on in the neighborhood. And I've reached out to some, just some acquaintances of mine that are involved in, you know, animal shelters, rescues, and all of these different things. And, you know, I've gotten some advice from those people. As far as, you know, the husky breed goes, it's a very difficult breed to, to, you know, effectively train. It takes a lot of work, especially around smaller animals. It takes somebody who really knows what they're doing. And having four together that are all now in this pack mentality, that now have this proclivity to attack smaller dogs and smaller animals, such as chickens, that's a behavior that they would literally, all four dogs need to be completely separated, rehabbed, retrained. And at that point, you know, then maybe, they may not have this aggressive tendency. So I think it's a very, it's a very hard, and it's a very awful situation to be in. And it's awful for the entire community in that neighborhood. And, you know, you have empathy for both sides, but I have to agree with Counselor Mano, and also the recommendation that, that, you know, something needs to be done. I do have one question, and that is, if we took the five days, if we took the five days to come back and make a decision, and she was able to place the dogs somewhere, so one of the dogs is going somewhere on Saturday. So if we met on Monday...
The dog would be gone.
The dog would be gone, so we would not have jurisdiction over it. So there's a chance that she could place a couple more dogs before we have to make this determination. So I guess that would be, that would be the way that, you know, I would say that maybe we should, we should go with this, that it shouldn't be...
Unless, I think one of the recommendations here also is that we can request possession of those dogs. In other words, they to be put in the pound.
Could you repeat that?
You can request possession and impoundment until you make your decision.
Until you make the decision?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Well, that, but I think, that's what I'm saying, that would seem to counter exactly what you're saying, though.
Right.
Because you seem to be, you seem to be trying to suggest the idea that we want, that if we take a little time to think about it, she'll have a chance to get another dog out of the picture. As opposed to what you're saying is that we'll be requiring them to hold the dogs here while we decide it.
So that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a permanent, we're not talking about permanent solution there, no?
No, none of this is permanent, no.
So just until we make the decision. All right, that's...
Just to be clear too, so part of that is also, it has to do with keeping the, so if we make a decision and it's not what they want, they have the right to appeal. They have a seven-day, seven-day, within 10 days of the order, they can bring a petition to the district court within the district here, relative to the dog. And then they can, that is where we can also issue where the dog is owned, or kept, or addressed during that time. We can, we'll have to pick up the costs for hanging on to that, to keeping the dog. If the dog is deemed a danger still by the court, then the owners would have had to then reimburse the town for the costs of keeping the dog impounded. If it's not, if the judge goes beyond and says it's not dangerous in that respect, then we incur the costs that we had, in terms of keeping the dog confined.
One other question that's related to that. So if we, if we made a determination tonight, and then the owners requested an appeal, if they then home, are they now stuck with this decision, or could they potentially rehome?
No, as far as the way I've read the law, is once you determine that the dogs are dangerous, because there's a difference between a dog that's a nuisance and a dog that's dangerous. Okay, if the dog is deemed dangerous, then you have a couple of things that you can do. You can have the dog restrained at their property, at the owner's property, have the dogs confined. You can have the dogs placed in our kennel, in our shelter. And then if you make the decision that the dogs are going to be euthanized, she has 10 days to take it to court.
Okay.
There's actually, yeah, and there's a little more, too. So it just, yeah, there's a whole lot, there's a number of pages. But so Evelyn is completely correct in terms of the smallness. So the first one, if we deem it, you can do one or more. You can actually combine these orders. So one that it's humanly restrained, provided that no ownership or right of dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an animal. an inanimate object. So they have to be restrained, but okay. Two, that the dog is confined on the premise, but it has to be confined, meaning securely confined indoors or confined outdoors, securely enclosed, locked pen, dog run. Let's see, you have to have enclosure... If such enclosure has no floors, it has to be secured on the sides. The sides have to be embedded into the ground, not less than two feet. There's a lot of parameters to the confinement. Number three, the removal from the premise of the owner or premise of the person keeping the dog. It should be securely humanly... Anytime it is off-premise, it has to be humanly muzzled and restrained with a chain, again, minimum strength of 300 pounds, no more than three feet. So they have to mind that. Those are all the rules. And then they also... We could ask them to have a proof of insurance in the amount of not less than $100,000, ensuring the owner or the keeper of any claims, loss, damage, injury to persons, domestic or otherwise, whether intentional or unintentional, the dog... Let's hear proof that reasonable... Even if there's proof, there's reasonable efforts were made, they need to have insurance. Let's see, the policy has to be issued, the owner has to keep... Produce the policy upon request from hearing authority or justice or the courts. Let's see, number five, the owner or keeper of the dog providing to the licensing authority or animal control office or other identity and the other information about which the dog... So that was what they were talking about, tattooing, or those types of things, pictures, videos, microchip implantation, all that stuff to prove those dogs are being kept in some way. And then, let's see, the unfidulter... Then there's the alterations. I imagine that means if they need to be spayed, or neutered, or those types of things, which I think they are. So, and then the euthanization. So there's... Sometimes with that dangerous situation, we're now on the same idea as, even if we deem it dangerous, and we say, do all these things, even have insurance, are we sure that the family can actually control that? So that's... We're back to that same issue of, even if it's not a danger, it's a nuisance, but then can they control it? So...
Right.
Yeah. Sorry. Councilman Manah, and then Councilor...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to the hearing officer. So if we don't come up with a decision tonight, and we utilize the five days given to us, knowing that we will be coming with a decision within five days, knowing that this is coming, the owner can still ship the dog out of state, knowing that this is...
I didn't see anything in the MGL stating that they can't. The only way you can prevent them from doing that is by having the dogs held in our pound until a decision is made.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Steve?
Yeah, I was curious. I don't know if you can answer this question, Evelyn, or if the chief would have to answer it. Can you... Is there a legal... Because it's not in our packet. Is there a legal definition of a nuisance dog?
Actually, it's in there.
It's here.
I didn't see it in here. I didn't see it in here.
It's basically...
It just says... I mean, it says a bunch of things that you cannot define it as, but doesn't clearly define what a nuisance dog is.
Like you say, if the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances. So, was the dog protecting or defending itself, its offspring? The person who was attacked or threatened by the dog was committing a crime upon the entry of the home, basically. The person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, otherwise. At the time of the attack or threat, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure structure in which the dog was in, which we know is not the case. And that's a big, long paragraph of those. Let's see, whether they're locked or not... However, if that person is underage, seven, then it... There's a rebuttal.
Right.
Okay, the hearing, and that's it. So those are the items that would... If those were not reasons for the dogs doing what they did, then there's a problem.
Well, certainly. And it seems like going through that list, none of those apply here.
And also, let's see, nuisance dog or danger, provided, however, that no dog shall be deemed dangerous because it was growling, or barking, or slowly, or solely growling and barking, based upon the breed of the dog. If the dog was reacting to another animal, to a person, and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances, and those are the circumstances. So if the dog was defending itself against another dog, or those types of things.
Yeah, and I understand that. But the point is, what it seems to be here is that this particular section, although it refers to nuisance dogs, it seems to clearly be primarily covering dangerous dogs. That's why I'm asking. Is there a legal definition of what constitutes a nuisance dog in itself? I don't know if Shane or Evelyn knows that.
Just to determine whether it's a nuisance or danger based on the evidence.
I mean, it seems like, without a clear definition, it seems like nuisance is kind of... It's kind of nebulous. I mean, I'm just trying to get a feeling for what it... Whether there's a clear distinction between one or the other. I mean, it seems pretty obvious what a dangerous dog is. I think we're all pretty clear on what that is.
Madam Chair, and the hearing officer, I don't know the exact definition of a nuisance dog, but I would say that this... These dogs fall under the criteria of a dangerous dog, more so than a nuisance dog, which is why in the ACO, the animal control staff is not here any longer, but that's why the information in front of you is all basically dealing with dangerous dog. These dogs, in just my opinion, are far beyond nuisance dogs. Just my opinion.
I'm inclined to lean that way, too. I was curious to see if...
And Councilor Steve, just an example of a nuisance, just what we've dealt with in the past. You know, your neighbor keeps calling on you because your dog's out at 2:00 in the morning, barking. And it happens, you know, 10 nights in a row, and then it stops, then it happens 10 more nights in a row. That's more of a... You know, the dog is really no threat to public safety, or any people, or on the animals. It's a nuisance.
Okay.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, for a legal definition, I just Googled it. And this is from a Spencer. Dogs shall mean all animals of canine species, both male and female, excessive bark, and any dog shall be considered a public nuisance when the owner or sole person responsible allows said dog to annoy another person. It's reasonable right to peace.
More of an annoyance than an actual threat.
Yeah. So the barking and stuff. That's a nuisance.
Well, that's what I expected. I just wanted to get a clear... If there was a clear definition. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So questions? Councilor McKenzie?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm leaning towards not making a decision at this point. And could we make a decision by an envelope handed in? Has to be a verbal meeting?
And you can certainly make a motion to do so at this... We're entertaining a motion to deem first the dangerous nuisance section, and then what's the remedy to that. That's the intent.
Nuisance and dangerous nuisance would be two different things, right?
And nuisance or dangerous.
Nuisance and dangerous is definitely different.
Yeah.
So you were trying to deem it one way or the other. That would be the first motion we have to contend with, and beyond that is...
Based on Councilman Manah's definition of nuisance, these dogs are far more than a nuisance.
So you're welcome to make any motion at any time, is what I'm saying to you?
Yeah.
If somebody wants to already get to that point, that's your choice. You know, that's a choice. And then what we do about that is listed in... That's what Counselor Nash originally wanted, was to get through the listing of what our opportunity, what our course of action could be. So I don't know if you want to... Should we get through that?
I'd like to... The motion at this stage, to accept the recommendation of the animal control officer and Chief Woodson. So that motion would be to deem the Huskies dangerous.
All of them or individually?
All three of them.
Their recommendation is all-inclusive, and while I hate it, unless someone wants to continue, I will make that motion now. Someone can determine if they're going to second it. Thank you.
Can I ask what the... We're just naming that it's dangerous, and then there's another...
At this point.
At this point. So no action is being...
But then, the limit to the... Let me... Let's not be... Let's not mislead. So the actions then you can take as dangerous, that's very important, because once we make this vote. So you can take, "The hearing authority shall order one or more of the following", and we were talking about it, "That the dog be humanely restrained, provided, however, no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to tree, post, or building." So that's one option. "The dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided, however, confined shall mean securely confined indoors, confined outdoors in a securely enclosed locked pen or dog run area upon the premise of the owner or keeper, provided further, such pen, dog run, shall have a secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor," it's the two-foot rule, "provided further that within the confines of the pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements is provided to protect the dog. Number three, that when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device, minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds, not more than three feet in length. Number four, the owner or the keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000..." We went through... Let's see, it's a long paragraph. "...against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional, of the dog, or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued, provided, however, that if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner shall keep and produce the policy upon request, hearing authority, or justice district court, and provide further, that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or the keeper shall produce proof of efforts to obtain such insurance. Five, the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order, information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, videos, veterinary examinations, tattoo, microchip implantation, or combination for identification. And six, that unless an owner or keeper of the dog provides evidence that a veterinarian is on the opinion the dog is unfit for alterations, that was the neutering section. And seven, that the dog be humanly euthanized. So we can choose one or all, or one or more. Obviously, if you're going to euthanize, you're not going to need the rest. But one or more of these, and the decision becomes, are we sure that the Rojas, or anybody else who might have the dog locally, will do this? That's it.
So if we deem the dog dangerous, can we then hold off to make a determination? Or if we were going to hold off to make a determination, should we hold off on that vote as well?
I would...
You have five days.
You have five days.
Any way you...
So we can make a motion to deem, and then we could wait to determine what we're doing.
So if you deem, and then wait to determine, you can do that. Okay.
But we have to, obviously, reconvene and do that again, as we're doing here. So you mentioned... Let me just see what we've got going on.
And it's five business days, or five days?
Five days.
So Monday would be the last day?
Monday would be the last day.
Okay. Monday, which is July 31st. Okay. Sorry. So we've got a motion a second. Councilor McKenzie?
No, no. I can't counter the emotion, so... The motion, so I'm not going to...
Well, you...
All right. Let me say it this way. I'd like to amend that motion. No, no, I don't want to amend that. I think the dog should be listed as dangerous, because they are. And I think what I'd like to do about amending a motion, if we could, is to then put it off until Monday. Can we... If we can do that, or we're going to do that separately? I'd like to deem the dogs as dangerous, but I don't want to make a decision today. But again, unfortunately, I'm going to be away next week.
I want to ask you a question, too, in regard to Councilor McKenzie.
Sure.
If we deem the dogs dangerous today, they cannot be sent to another state.
Unless you order them. If you order that, you'd have to order that, and then, of course, the chief can have it...
Order them not to leave the...
Not to leave the town. Then the chief can have it delivered tomorrow. I'll write up the decision, and then you can have it delivered personally to them, and then the five days would count by Monday.
Right.
Yeah, but I think I'm worried about that, because that's two parts. One is deeming, and the other is, the hearing authority can... Shall order the following, but that would be, if you're making it separate orders, I'm not sure then that we lose our ability to add the extra parts to it if we need it. In other words, if we say we're keeping it here...
And if I may...
Well, I think the order can be written out, that the dogs have been deemed dangerous. We are ordering them to stay in the town of Southbridge until final determination is made within the five days. And that is how I would write out the order, unless...
If you... Does that... Could we ask the chief, though, if that's... If you believe that's also... Because the animal... We've lost both our animal control...
If I go through, Madam Chair, again, yeah, I believe we could do that. I could have that served in hand by a police officer tomorrow morning, where we've deemed the dog dangerous, or you, the council, has deemed the dog dangerous, and it cannot leave the area. I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Right. Because according to mass general law, it says that they cannot be moved to another town.
No, it says that we cannot order them to be moved to another town.
Correct.
That's the issue, is whether we're ordering it, or they're doing it voluntarily.
And what I've been told...
That's kind of the gray area we're talking about here with the five-day period.
Well, just to clarify some of that, I'm speaking with the animal control officer from Oxford, who has, you know, who's done several of these. There have been a few instances where dogs have been deemed dangerous, and they've been ordered euthanized, and the owners, mysteriously, the dogs disappear, and never to be seen again.
Like I said, that happened in doing my research. That's exactly what happened at one point, that by the time the decision came down, the dogs had been removed.
Yep. If I may ask, I don't know if this is something you can answer, Shane, or you, Evelyn. Can we make an order? I think we're kind of in agreement as far as dangerousness, but if we were to go to the next step, can we make an order with the condition that a more serious response be required if it escapes again? That would automatically trigger a more serious response? Like, for example, like, for example, just to give you an idea, like, for example, it seems from what we were hearing, that although they are all dangerous, it seems like this bunny seems to be more of a follower. And it seems like, if I'm understanding this properly, that possibly that particular dog might be able to be confined to the premises, as opposed to... But if we were to make a distinction between the dogs... But if we... What I'm thinking is that if we were to do something like that, for example, could we have it set up so that they are to be confined to the premises, but if they escaped, they will be euthanized?
I believe... I don't believe you could do that. I believe what would happen is if they escaped, and there was another incident, we would have to have another hearing.
We would.
Yes.
That's kind of...
Thanks to Bunny being involved in the killing of a...
Well, that's true. Yeah, that's true. You're right. You're right.
Okay, hang on. Let Councilor Claire, she's been trying for a while.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, through you. I guess, so maybe I should clarify the reason for why I want the five days. It looks like she's working with a husky rescue. She's homed one. She's got another one that's going to be gone on Saturday to people who seem to be willing and understanding of what's going on. You know, these husky rescues, the one that she's working with, you know, they deal with these kind of aggressive dogs, and do their due diligence to put them in decent homes with loving and caring families, without putting communities at risk. So I... Like, I would be looking... I'm in favor of ruling them as dangerous, and I'm in favor of doing that tonight, so long as it does not preclude the owners to do, you know, their best efforts to get, you know, the dogs rehomed by the time that we reconvene on Monday. Because the dog was going to go up to New Hampshire on Saturday.
True.
So... Okay, go ahead. Councilor McKenzie, then, Councilman.
Oh, I was actually pointing to Councilor Manah. Let her go first.
Thank you, Councilor McKenzie. You know, I respect what Councilor Claire is saying, and it's, you know... I'm just concerned, though, because we don't have any proof that she's working with a husky rescue. I didn't see any paperwork in my file for that. The inconsistencies with her remarks on not knowing, I'm going back to the chickens, not knowing about the chickens. I just saw some inconsistencies there. I'm not saying that... I'm not saying that she's not working with the husky rescue and trying to find homes for these dogs. I'm saying, if that's the case, I would like to see proof of that before I would make... I just would want to see proof that she's actually working with a husky rescue, before I would make a decision like that. Because... I'm sorry, these animals are dangerous. They're attacking dogs, you know. And as Councilor Steve says, Bunny seems to be the more relaxed one, the follower, but eventually, a follower becomes a leader.
Absolutely. That's true.
And that does worry me. So that's all.
Thank you, Councilor Claire. Good... Oh, I figured. I've read in your mind.
Thank you.
I always raise right.
Just in... Or thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just in response to that, I agree with you. I think these animals are a danger. I think they need to be taken out of the neighborhood. I don't think that, you know, the home that they're in is fully equipped and trained to handle these dogs, and, you know, the aggressive behaviors that they are exhibiting. I'm not asking for, you know, you have 30 days, or you have six months. We're within, you know, we're still... things that they have taken to try and remedy the situation, I think that it's reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, now Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Counselor, Chairman. I'm really torn. I'm looking at these dogs as being somewhat dangerous, but on the same token, I, my weakness is that I am a dog lover, and the, I would like to see that this is put off until Monday, and possibly Skunky could be skunked to another neighborhood. And also, then they'll leave two dogs, and could it be advised to the Rojas, Mrs. Rojas, to see if she could find another home for the other dog, rather than, for one of the other two dogs, rather than see it euthanized? But if they can't, I mean, I would probably be okay with them keeping one dog, because I think she probably can't control one dog, she can't control four, and it's kind of obvious. So my, I would like to see maybe one dog, this way, even if one of the two dogs that she keeps has to be euthanized, she's got one. And she's also, if we wait till Monday, she also has an opportunity to try to find another home for the other dog, and, you know, maybe we can save all four of them without euthanizing any of them. But by Monday, a decision to, if the dogs are still there, three dogs are still there, another decision has to be made.
Yep, that's true.
So Counselor Morales?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just want to, just letting, just, we have to have in mind that this has been going on for five years now, and I think that this decision should have been made a long time ago, instead of wait till now. For me personally, it's a bit hard, I'm a dog lover myself, and I think that we should make a decision now, instead of making it harder and coming back Monday to make a decision. We, I think we're on the same page by deeming these dogs dangerous, so I mean, why not take action now, instead of making it harder for us, for the family, to have to wait till Monday to know what is it that we're going to do? Thank you.
Counselor...
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I'll echo the same sentiment. I'm not a big animal lover because of allergies, but I did have my parents' dog, which meant the world to me for the last year and a half since my stepfather passed, and I will tell you how hard making the call to put that dog down was, so I get it. We have a history in front of us, unfortunately, that shows, at least in my opinion, that the owner has not demonstrated clear responsibility for these animals. And I'll point to March 8th, 2017, the report of the dog, or dogs attacking chickens, and two months later was when the small Yorkie of Ms. Woods was killed. I don't think that in my, it is sensitive, I get it, but I'll tell you, the police chief and the animal control officers have made a recommendation, and while I won't say that I agree with euthanizing at this stage, deeming the dogs that remain dangerous tonight is what the other residents that were here making statements, and from whom we've read their statements, I hope, it's what they deserve to hear. What's more, I don't think that delaying does the owner of these animals any good, sitting around waiting, wishing for us to determine, since it's our responsibility, which direction we want to go. At the very least, I encourage counsel present to make a determination. As I've suggested, I choose to support the dangerous determination at this stage, and I know it's hard, but I'd like to stick with that, and not ask and move the question by any means, but I'll just reiterate, we have the history in front of us. I don't think people need to wait on this. We've waited to have this hearing, people showed up, we're charged with making a decision and determination, at the very least, we need to make the determination, yea or nay, on the dangerousness tonight. Thank you.
On, in following you, I just want to make a determination as to the events and which dogs were involved in the different events. So if we go to the Yorkie, Mrs. Woods' dog that was killed, the two dogs involved in that incident are Skunky and Froggy, Froggy is the one that is gone, Skunky is the one that is leaving. On the attacks on the chickens of March 8th, the dogs involved were Froggy and Skunky, again. On the May 26, 15, the attack on the other two dogs from Ms. Buchanan's dogs, the dogs involved there were Piggy and Bunny, and that was in 2015. Okay, so, just so you can get an idea of which dogs were involved in what incidents, and maybe that might help you decide.
One thing that was actually, if I may, Madam Chair, one thing that we heard about, but we don't have in our report, is the December 27, 2012 report about attacking a miniature printer?
Yeah, I can have that.
Do we have any idea which two were involved in that?
That's the one, here, December 12, I responded to a complaint, the abuse of two dogs being left outside 24 hours a day. That seems to be just the dogs being left outside, and it doesn't say which two dogs it was.
No, no, but the, but the, but the ACO stated, the ACO stated that the dogs attacked a miniature printer named Cujo at one point during their testimony.
That's here, under 11, yeah, 11, 11, I think the date's...
Is that this one? Because they said it was, they said it was December 27, 2012.
That's November 26. It says, reported that two husky were loose and attacked her miniature printer, Cujo.
Okay, so for some reason, I guess, the dates got confused in there, because they did say December 27, so, okay.
Where do you see December 27?
No, one of them said it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it says here, but it says, both of these say November, one says November 11th, and the other says November 26.
Okay, okay.
So, there was an October 11th listed here, that's not listed here.
Yeah, I've got that, I've noted, I know, okay, so many pieces of paper flying around here.
So, okay, the dogs were loose on October 11th, 2013, then on, they were reported that they were loose and running around. That was Froggy and Piggy, according to Mr. Figueroa. And November 26, 2013, was when the Michelle Mondor from Charlton Street said that she had her dog and the other dogs attached her printer, and then ran off.
Right, on my chronology of events, I put 11, 11, it's 10, 11.
Okay. There are two, there are two incidences. Here...
This 10, 11.
Right, and then 11, 11. This one here just says that Mr. Figueroa reported his two dogs ran off this morning, and he was looking for them. He described the dogs as red and white husky and a black one. Then on November 26, Mondor says...
That's the one that was emailed, right?
Reported the two huskies were loose and attacked. Okay, so it could have been, yeah. It's just, it's a little hard, but it's two, it's either the one combined incidence, or it's two incidences. I don't know if she only reported it on November 26, or if she, if it was two incidences.
Right, because the chronology of events that I gave you is based on the actual reports.
Files, yes, okay.
Right, right, right.
I was curious.
That's where I got those dates.
What you're referring to right now is the one that was emailed to us, right?
Correct, correct. I didn't have that.
Yeah, I couldn't print that, so, okay, I got it now.
Sorry.
If I may, I think that what we're looking at has nothing to do with the motion that's really on the floor, and that is to whether we're going to deem these dogs dangerous or not.
Well, that's true.
And I think what we should do is get to the point of that first, and then go on to whatever next.
Well, I think what we're trying to determine is if we're going to determine them all dangerous, we wanted to know what, which dogs were involved with which incidences, and if they were all, because they were trying to say that certain dogs weren't as dangerous as others, if we're going to deem them all dangerous, then...
Thank you.
She was giving us the Piggy-Bunny situation, because Bunny was the one in question, but Bunny did do an attack, too, so...
And Froggy is clearly the most dangerous one, he's gone.
All right, Counselor Manna.
Madam Chair, in regards to the November, there's one for November 25, 2013, that talks about the dogs attacking the smaller dog. And then on November 26, it talks about an officer, ACO Shields, responded to a dog bite report. So it's a dog bite, and then there's an attack on, and I believe the dog bite was in regards to the niece that was over to the house.
Correct, that's September 10.
No, that's November 26.
She's another, she's in a different year.
November 26, 2013, the police report.
That's the one where she bites.
She's looking at a police report, though, and the dates aren't the same.
Yeah, I'm looking at the police reports.
That's what I'm saying. Are we, I think we're in agreement, though, that they all have a problem.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Regardless of...
But I just wanted to clear that up, because it was two days in a row that I see a report, and they're both separate incidences.
Right. Very good. All right, so we, again, we currently have a motion on the table and a second, in which to deem the dogs dangerous. The police chief has come up and said that he believed we could deem them dangerous, and with a hold order to keep them in town. If we don't want to do that hold order to allow for one to go out on Saturday, that's possible. We can write it, we can just do it as we're doing it, deeming them dangerous, and then according to the hearing officer, she has seen incidents where they have, not disposed, but replaced, placed dogs somewhere else. So regardless, by Monday, we would probably still end up with two. I would be, I would move forward with it only with the clarification that we have some documentation as to where that dog goes, and proof that that dog actually went to where they said, and it didn't stay local.
Right.
In other words, they could tell us it's going to New Hampshire, and they came up and told us it was going to New Hampshire, if that's what happens, but what if it doesn't go to New Hampshire and it stays here?
Well, I'm in the same thing as Counselor Manna, that I'd like to see that she is working with a rescue.
Right, well, that sounds right, so it's a combination, I'm just saying, I would be concerned that it doesn't really go.
I mean, we have the inconsistencies up there, I'm sorry, there's just too many inconsistencies to not, unless you have the actual proof, I won't believe it, I'm sorry, that's my own opinion.
Evelyn, as far as the Mondor report, do we have a clear identification with which dog it is? Because these two reports are, the two, the two police statements here from their logs are actually clearly identifying the same incident, although one is the police response, and then obviously the next morning Kathy Shields went there to visit the scene. So they're the same incident, but do we know which dog this was?
So they were caught on their rabies, and they were placed in quarantine for 10 days.
It just says that two huskies did it, but it doesn't specify their descriptions.
Are you interested in the November one?
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
They're two separate incidents.
Yeah, so the dogs were described as a black and white husky, which is Piggy, and a red, white husky, which is Froggy.
Okay, so then it was Piggy-Froggy versus Piggy-Bunny.
Okay.
Yeah, so this one, it's Froggy and Piggy.
It's not funny, it really isn't, it's just so, it's confusing.
It is, exactly, exactly, okay.
Okay, so we seem to have a combination, all around.
The most aggressive one is obviously Froggy, and he's gone. The one that's still around is Piggy, and that's, that one seems to be fairly dangerous, so...
Yes, and Piggy and Bunny are the ones that she is keeping, she's licensed those two dogs.
And then she said she gave Piggy training.
Right, she said...
That's, that one, that dog's had a reputation for being dangerous.
She said that Piggy had gone to obedience school.
Right, right.
Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, unfortunately, even with regular dogs, as we know.
Well, and I know from, I know from, like, a friend of mine had huskies, died, but, I mean, unfortunately, they can be well taken care of, they can be perfectly well-loved and not abused at all, and yet I know that that particular dog ate his cat.
Right.
So...
Okay, so we'll let Counselor McKenzie go first this time, since he's deferred numerous times.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm feeling that even two of these dogs are going to be too much for this lady, Ms. Ross, so I think if she's allowed to keep any of them, she should keep one.
No more than one, definitely.
And no more than one.
So that's the second part of our...
Right.
And then it would have to fall under any of those other restrictions we could put on it.
I would say under the restrictions, two and three.
Okay, all right, so Counselor Manna?
Madam Chair, through you, if we deem the dogs dangerous tonight, and we can't come with a decision on what to do with the dogs tonight, then I would like to see the dogs impounded, that way we know where they are. We know exactly where they are. And the dogs are going to be safe, they're going to be taken care of, nothing's going to happen to them, and we know they're not going to get loose. I'm sorry, there's just been too many times, oh, you know, they don't go out of the house, we fixed the yard, no, they haven't been outside, yes, they're being moved in two weeks, they're going to be back inside the house, there's just too many, so I would like to see the dogs under our control until, you know, if we can't come up with a decision tonight. But I'd like to see us come with a decision tonight.
So clearly, we've had a lot of discussions, so I'm going to kind of, I think, I think we've discussed out this topic. I will ask the chief, is there, is it feasible to be able to hold the dogs, or is that legal to hold the dogs, that you're aware, if we, we hold them until we decide on what we're doing with them? Is that feasible, what's the cost incurred for the community, that type of thing?
If the council votes that they're dangerous and that we should hold these dogs in quarantine, I believe we could do that. We would have, but again, if they appeal, and just make note of this, if they appeal through the trial court, which they likely will, and it's overturned, we'll be responsible for any of the costs associated with removing those dogs. So you could order the dogs, you know, quarantined, and we could go with the animal control staff first thing in the morning and serve them this notice, that would have to be drafted and signed by the council ordering this, if that's what you choose to do.
So I think, just be clear, too, that one of the things we should think about as a council up here, and you mentioned the citizens that came and have had to deal with this for a long time, if we don't do that, and today's Wednesday, they get to go through another weekend of concern, perhaps, that the dogs could get loose at some point, not that they will necessarily, but they could. If we do the other way, we incur costs, expense to keep them quarantined, imagine in Oxford, at the Oxford pound, would we end up there, or would they end up at ours?
Of course.
Because we have issues with ours, as we know. So I'm just pointing those...
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The cost is, there shouldn't be a cost put on safety.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
And I just, I just want everybody to know that, I mean, if it's overturned and we incur the cost, then we're still doing what we feel is necessary to keep the community safe. I mean, like I said, somebody's pet is like, it's like family, and, you know, next it might not be, somebody might have a baby playing outside, a toddler or something, and the dogs...
Point taken, Counselor Manna, point taken.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody, anybody else who wants to make a comment before we move to it? So currently, the motion is strictly to deem the dog dangerous. Do we want to add to that motion with what we, or are we going to do something after, with a separate motion now that it's been given?
I prefer to keep the motions separate.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. All right, okay.
And Madam Chair, through you, if I may, I haven't gotten a sense from other counselors, so I'll just ask the question, and let you run with it if you'd like, ma'am. Is there a need to differentiate between the remaining animals, because it is my opinion to trust the police chief and the statements that we've had, and deem any remaining animals dangerous, that's why I've made the motion as such. So I would entertain through you if someone wanted to differentiate, but I would still make the same motion for both remaining animals, or any remaining animals.
So I, the motion was for all three animals at this point, and I have not heard anyone asked to amend that.
Okay.
So your motion is on the table.
Thank you.
Yes.
So seeing no further discussion or closing debate at this point, is the option to do, I guess we're going to go to a roll call vote on your motion, which is, do you want to, do you have the wording on the motion, or do you want him to read back what he'd like to do?
I would love a clarification on the wording.
You're good?
I would love a clarification on the wording on the motion.
If you could go for that again, please, Counselor Nash.
I don't know that it's exactly as I had expressed it the first time around, but my motion would be to deem all three dogs dangerous dogs per...
Chapter 140, section...
Thank you, chapter 140, section 157, Mass. General Law. I don't know if there's anything more to it. Per information provided.
Should we reread it in its entirety so we have it clear, and there's no, like, make sure that it's...
Should we, would you recommend that we clarify that the dogs are...
You read it, like...
It wasn't, it didn't flow, of course, because we didn't have a motion prepared for us.
That's okay, we're getting it done, we're getting it done.
Perhaps before we vote, we could ask the board clerk if she could read what we're going to do. I don't know if there's anything more to it.
That's...
Per information provided.
Should we reread it in its entirety so we have it clear? And there's no, like, make sure that it's...
And should we, would you recommend that we clarify that it's the dogs owned by...
You better, like...
It wasn't, it didn't flow, of course, because we didn't have a motion prepared for us.
That's okay. We're getting it done, we're getting it done.
Perhaps before we vote, we could ask the board clerk if she could read what, what we've stated, what we've stated.
We're complaining against Stephanie Rojas for her dog, so I think that perhaps we need to make sure that the owner's name is listed in that motion.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you want to try it again.
So may I start again?
Yes, and nice and slow.
If it's clearer or due process, I'm happy to rescind and restart. You tell me.
Keep going.
Okay. I will move to deem the dogs owned by Ms. Stephanie Rojas dangerous dogs per chapter 140, section 157 of the document provided Mass. General Law. Three, there are three dogs.
Yes.
This really should have been written.
Yeah.
Yeah, but people are talking in my ear, and I, and I don't appreciate that. Thank you. Someone else can make the motion next time.
That was good.
I'm not mad.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, I believe that was the motion made the first time around, so it sounds like the same motion we heard earlier.
Thank you.
So we're just going to, let's repeat it, that the, the motion is to deem the dogs owned by Ms. Stephanie Rojas dangerous per chapter one, per Mass. General Laws, chapter 140, section 157.
Should we be more, be more specific, get to the breed? I mean, she does, said she doesn't have any more dogs, but, okay. Second.
Well, we already had that.
I just, he just restated the motion, I just restated it in a second, okay.
Okay, which is really good to do when it's been a long time. All right, so seeing we're done with this, if you could give a roll call, that would be great.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Counselor Claire, yeah.
Forgot one.
Forgot Counselor Claire.
Well, Claire's a yes, too.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, I forgot to go to the top.
It just rolls over.
Sorry.
She's good. You're good? Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're still at seven.
Those seven yes.
Now, the council, even I can't remember. Okay, seven. So motion passes, the dogs have now been deemed dangerous. So vote the recommended course of action would be Agenda Item Number Five. And again, that can be multiple motions, if, if a motion that we want to hold the dogs, and then we want, if we want to wait to deem the, the course of action until Monday, which is our last date, or if we want to continue the conversation and do it tonight. I'm hoping to what this council wants.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counsel McKenzie.
I'll just restate what I stated before. If we cannot come to a decision tonight, I'd like to see the dogs in, in our control.
Are you making a motion?
I guess so.
That they stay, remain in our control until we...
Until the determination, the decision's been made. So how, how would that be worded?
I think it could just...
Well, if you don't, and this is what I just want to clear up, if you don't have it worded correctly, then it can come back to bite you, and I don't want it to come back to bite us. Well...
It's fine.
I don't, I didn't mean it like that. I just want to make sure that it's, it's worded correctly, so it doesn't come back to haunt us there. How's that better?
So we can, you can make a motion to have the dogs held within, within our confines until this hearing authority orders one or more of the options listed in the Mass. General Laws, chapter 140, section 157.
So, um...
Is that not, what would you like it to say?
If you look, if you go down in the packets that you receive to section E, D, or E and D?
Yep, pending.
That might help with the wording on it. It says, this is once they get to the dis-record section, but I'm sure we could use that. It says dis-record, to request an order of impounding.
Amendment, that's yes, thank you.
Okay? So...
I have it highlighted.
So I would move...
Do you see that, Ma'am?
Yeah.
Right.
I would move to have the three dogs owned by Stephanie Rojas under Mass. General Law, chapter 140, section 157, to have them impounded at a facility that our municipality uses as a shelter, to shelter the dogs until such decision is made, according to the Mass. General Law. Right?
Orders. It's a little off. Until the, until the hearing authority reads in one or more.
If I could, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe...
We could use some direction.
We could do this, but the issue is when we show up, if they say, well, none of the dogs are here. So just understand that, yes, we can make this order, we can order this quarantine, but when we show up there, we can't go kicking indoors and knocking people over and dragging dogs out. So if we show up there with this order, that's going to have to be written and signed tonight, or by tomorrow morning, anyway, and we hand this, we serve them this paperwork in hand saying that the council has ordered us to quarantine these dogs, they might not cooperate anyway. So I'm not sure, you know, how, honestly, I'm not sure at this point. Usually, I'm pretty confident in, in when I give decisions, but in this particular case, I don't, this is uncharted territory for me. As far as taking people's dogs that are deemed dangerous, I've not done it.
So either, so your option, then, is to either come up with a decision or to do nothing until we come up with a decision?
Well, that's just my opinion on what I would do, because I, I'm not certain that if we do an order to quarantine, how much they would cooperate with us, anyway. Just speculating on, you know, my experience on the criminal side, people are not always cooperative when you're doing things that they don't want you to do.
Sure.
And it's an animal, and I'm an animal lover, and I love my dog, and I would be pretty upset if someone came to my house and tried taking him. So, you know, regardless if he was deemed dangerous or not...
Right.
I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Absolutely.
Or you can have them confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog.
Right. I mean, obviously, there, we're back at that, what we already said earlier, is if we don't come up with a decision of what to do, then, then it just puts the risk over the weekend, so... All right, Counsel McKenzie?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'm thinking, I'm thinking that rather than go with that impounding concept, I would look at number two and number three. The dog be confined to the premise for the keeper of the dog, and that when removed from the premise for walking the dog or whatever, if the dog be kept on a leash, securely muzzled or whatever, has to be restrained.
Yeah, I see.
I think we're, Madam Chair, I think, I think we're talking about two, two very different things here. Are you referring to doing it while we, while we make a decision, or are you talking about doing it as a final penalty?
No, I'm, I'm talking about doing it as, while we're waiting to make a decision.
Just clarifying that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I, I don't believe that was the intent of the wording that was presented within this document, just for the record. But I guess I would also like to suggest that I'm not myself prepared to make a motion, although we may have a motion on the table, with a suggested course of action.
Okay.
I, I would rather hear what others think might be appropriate. For one, despite the recommendation of the chief and the animal control officers, plural, I'd rather discuss before, at any point, we make a recommendation for euthanasia with remaining animals.
Agreed.
So if we aren't talking about going with some of the more severe consequences, I may not issue a second or put a second in for Counsel Manna's motion.
For refinement, right.
But I'd like to properly gauge which direction we might consider heading before we go that route. So at that stage, at this stage, I'd ask if Counsel Manna might rescind her motion until we decide something.
There was no second at this point, so she can make another, she chooses to, but there was no second.
Are you okay with me doing that?
Do whatever you want.
Good, thank you. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Steves?
My thoughts are, I'm kind of, kind of need to lean toward the idea of trying to make it, I mean, trying to make a decision, I mean, I, I think, I think what we'll make it, we can be making a decision that might be different for each of the three dogs. I, I like the idea that Counsel McKenzie and Counsel Claire mentioned about giving them a little time to see if we can get one or two of them out of this picture. I think that is fair to the dogs. But I think ultimately, that this is, I, I'm inclined to, given, given the tracker that we've seen, I mean, we did mention that all of them have been shown to be dangerous, and that they all have somewhat aggressive tendencies, increasingly, depending on what we're referring to. I would think that based on what we have heard, given, given the fact that the Rojases have put in new fencing, some of the other stuff that's gone on down there, I think that they, I'm inclined to agree with, I think it was Wally was saying earlier, about that I think they can probably handle the, the most docile of the dogs.
Bunny.
Bunny, yes. And so if we can, I'm, I'm inclined to lean to have, to have that dog, to give that dog options two and three. And can, can we, can we split them and make a decision on one, on one of the dogs now and give the, give them time to do the other two dogs?
You can do whatever you want.
And come back, come back to make a decision on the other two?
Yeah, no, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, Counsel McKenzie?
Yes.
Thinking about the reading.
Thank you, Chair. I'm thinking that I don't know which dog would be most docile, or which dog that...
It's, it's a tough decision, yeah.
That they would prefer to even keep. I would assume that they'd want to keep the most docile. And I think, given what I've seen, Bunny is probably, probably the most docile, but, and that's the direction that I would probably lean to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too.
I do want to also remind you, when Ms. Rojas was making her testimony, you asked her the question whether she was willing to just keep one.
And she said yes.
She did answer, yes.
She said yes, right. Although, we didn't clarify which one was her favorite.
I think that's a kind, a kinder way to deal with it.
Well, then, if, if you're not leaning to making the full decision on them, and you're leaning towards a Monday night meeting, would it not then be better to wait and to allow them the option to come in and...
And decide which ones they want.
And decide which one, or, you know...
I mean, that might also be an issue of which dog would be, you know, more amenable to the families they're talking to, too, so...
Actually, they might know which dog would actually be better behaved as well. I would think that if I was going to make a decision, I'd want to not keep the most affectionate dog, but I want to keep the dog that I know I'm going to be able to keep.
Right.
I would, I would point out that I am a little concerned about them putting skunky out somewhere else where it could be a danger to another, another, somebody else's problem.
That is true, yeah.
So we could always make a decision, too, and then they, once our decision's made, they have time to appeal. So if we make the decision tonight, either way, and we say euthanasia for two, and Bunny is salvaged, then, then they can't send it somewhere, unless we want to send it somewhere, you know?
That's true, we can't, we can't tell them to send it somewhere.
Right, we can't let, yeah, once it's, once they've been, once an order's been, then they'd have to appeal. So Counsel Nash? Oh, sorry, Doc Counsel.
No, I think Counsel Nash was first.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Thank you for deferring if I was indeed second. I'd just like to state and remind counsel present that we have a history of events, chronology's been presented. I, I would disagree with what I think Counsel McKenzie just said in regards to giving the owner an option. We have four years of history where options to rehome these animals has been something that they, they may have considered. Again, I'll reiterate, I know it's hard. We've been charged with making this determination. It's unfortunate, but I don't want to put it off. I would really much prefer to come up with a determination of the course of action sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
But I...
Do you want to make a motion to anything?
I'm still undecided on which direction. But I, I'm considering one right now, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Claire?
I would, I would like to make a motion. Wait, I had to pull that, pull that. I would like to make a motion to follow the, the police chief and the animal control officers' recommendation to euthanize the animals without a hold on them for the town or with, within the town pursuant to MGL, chapter 140, section 157.
Second. Okay, so euthanize the three?
With no hold on them?
With no hold on them.
As, as, we are not actually impounding them.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Counsel Nash? Uh, we had a second, okay. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I, I just want to verify that indeed, what I read is indeed the course of action that the owner would have to appeal to the district court beyond the determination and the decision that the council makes for that course of action. So they will have an opportunity to seek remedy, to satisfy themselves if the court doesn't agree with this.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And again, clear, within 10 days after an order is issued under subsection A through C, inclusive, the owner or the keeper of the dog may bring a petition to the district court within judicial district in which the order relative of the dog was issued. Let's see, Kip, just keep going. Owner, pardon me?
If I could, yeah, just because this, this I am familiar with.
Oh.
Yes, this absolutely is not the last line, this is not going to happen tomorrow morning. What would happen in this particular case is the first round of appeals, like the Madam Chair had mentioned, would be that 10-day hearing request, that'd go to a clerk magistrate. The clerk magistrate at that point, just like in a criminal proceeding, would make sure that everything was followed within the letter of the law as far as the town council, which I believe it was. If the clerk magistrate sides with the town council, they have another right to appeal to a judge, and they could sit down in a courtroom and have, you know, witnesses questioned, et cetera, that type of thing, get attorneys. So this, by no stretch of the imagination, would, based on your vote tonight, it would not end tonight or tomorrow morning. This could go on for several months.
Thank you.
Shane, if I may ask, before you take off. Chief? Just one quick question. If, if they do appeal it and it goes to court, I'm just curious, are we likely to be called as witnesses?
You potentially could be, but in the past, in speaking with ACO Flynn from Oxford, it would be the animal control officer and myself.
Okay.
Because we're the ones who authored the reports and did the investigation.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
Any other questions or comments on that? So we have a motion on the table. Do you have the wording pretty well for the motion? Or do you...
No, I think I'm good. I think I'm okay with the motion.
Okay, all right, very good. If you have any questions after the fact, you can, you can dot the Ts and cross the Ss. Okay, so, oops, Counsel McKenzie?
On that motion, all three dogs would be, okay, thank you. Just wanted a clarification.
All right. So seeing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor McKenzie?
No.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Claire?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Motion passes. All right. And at that point, I want to thank everyone for doing this. It was not an easy task this evening, thank you for your time. Motion to adjourn?
So hold.
All, all in favor? Show of hands, unanimous. Thank you.